Want to do the roll call?
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brighters?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Do public comment speakers?
We have two speakers tonight. First one is David Kozinski.
Good evening, council. David Kozinski speaking on behalf of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association. Just a tiny little thing. Looking at the Southwest Rancher yesterday evening, we noticed that there was a tiny little error in the calendar. It shows our meeting being held on the 24th when actually it's going to be held on May 31st, which there's no date on the calendar, but it's going to be May 31st. I think that's maybe an alternative day or a false fax date or something. I don't know. Anyway, our speaker scheduled to be is Kerry Cashar with the PACE program. So if anybody's interested in listening to Ways to Improve Your Home, the Resonatory Program, come on out. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Gay Chapels.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, I'm here to complain.
What's new?
Look, I know it's a rat trap, you know. People call now. We're reactive to 90% of our, 95% of our stuff. So we don't react until somebody calls, which means that there could be 50 signs around town, but a next-door neighbor doesn't like my sign, so they call and I have to remove my sign, but the other 55 signs in town stay. Now, I'm just, this is a creative thing with me. I use that rather than point out some other issues. When you have the influx of, I don't want to offend anybody, mega mansions coming into town, they say they love it, and they love it, but they don't like the animals, they don't like the way the streets are, they don't like, they have a whole list of they don't likes. So they find out that they can now call and code will attack whoever thereafter. And as a result, what they don't understand about code is that it doesn't necessarily make the problem go away. Obviously, some of the fines, which go up to $200,000, will prove that. So you have maybe an issue where somebody calls on somebody and they cite him, and the person doesn't take care of it, and then the master tacks on $250 a day, and that runs for three years, and pretty soon they're looking at a $250,000 fine on the property. Meanwhile, the people that complained, which wanted instant fix for their complaint, didn't get it. So they're as upset as the people that are being fined because they didn't take care of it. I don't have the answer. I'm not here to give you an answer or a solution. I just think it's getting out of hand. And there are a lot of, oh, Lord, I was going to use a word, I can't use it, it'd probably be beeped, kickers, blank kickers, in town. And we're used to living the way we've lived here for 50 years, or 40 years, or 30 years, and now all of a sudden, we're being hammered. And as a result, it is going to fast-forward the identity of this town. Now, I fought recently to have the new tax appraiser come in and talk to the public about ag and how they can get ag, and so on and so forth. It was very successful, by the way. He had over 400 people here. But it's important to hang on to our ag here, or we're going to become Weston. And I don't want anybody telling me I have to have a white mailbox and it has to be bright and shiny, but that's where we're headed. So whatever you guys can do to fix this, us blank kickers would love it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Dactin.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer Dactin. I've grown up and gone to school with many of your daughters and sons, and I've had kind of the same issue gays talking about. I've recently been cited for having my horse trailer out on my swale, in which it's been there for over 30 years. Not the same horse trailer, a different horse trailer. We have a neighbor that moved in and built up his property. I have been coming to the town and complaining for over two years now, and I have it documented and everything. I've even printed out pictures of my property flooding and the proof of what's going on over there. His fence is backwards, his swale was never done, he never put in the fence I was told he was going to put in to not allow the water to come onto my property. He put up a berm, and it's not even a berm, it's half of a berm. It's literally, they built dirt up on the fence, and now I have his water coming on my property, to the point where I've actually printed out photos for everyone to see of the damages of our property. We raise warm-blood horses, we breed them, we are also one of the only registered pygmy goat breeders in Florida, the only one in South Florida. We are also one of the only three Nigerian goat breeders. And with our property going over two and three foot of water on the entire property, none of my animals are safe. Not at all. We're losing business, my horses are coming up lame, we're having all kinds of issues. And I would really like to know why, if I've been bringing this to the town's attention for over two years, I feel like I've been swept under the rug. But then my million-dollar neighbor goes over two weeks ago and complains, and you guys run out and then cite me. When this has been here for 30 years, we've had a horse trailer on our swale. Now, even if I wanted to put the horse trailer somewhere on our property, we can't. It's completely underwater and muddy. There's no way that I can even get my truck back there sometimes. The water flows over our road to our barn. I'd really hope that you guys see all these pictures, and there's something that you guys can do about it. We just bought the, we bought the property from my grandparents. I've lived here since I was born, and I'd like to continue this, but I don't feel, you know, it just, it sucks. It sucks that people that have been here for 30 years are now getting pushed out by million-dollar mansions. So, that's all I have to say.
Next speaker is Deb Mantel.
Hello, everyone. I live on 5730 Southwest 166th Avenue, and I have a very similar situation where there was a vacant acre next to me, which I know that you all are aware of, the problems that I've had, which was excessive filling, a mega mansion, which I would call, because it doesn't fall in line with the rest of the houses on the street, that's built way up to the front with a side-access garage, that now requires a driveway with an accelerating or elevating driveway in order to get to his garage, which is the same level as my five-foot fence. I have the same problem, and I didn't think to bring pictures to illustrate it, but I have the same problem since the fill came in that Jennifer has, in that my whole front acre floods when it does rain severely. Now, granted, prior to that house coming, the adjoining acres did flood, because they are the lower properties in Southwest Ranches. However, I don't think that the older properties should be flooded because something new comes in next door, and that is going to dramatically change the face of my property. I have not had livestock on the front part of my agriculture property because I lost six head of sheep last year, who got sick from the flooding. I think that we need to also look at the fact that people are illegally filling. There was over 100 loads brought in, which I know you're also aware of, but it hasn't gone anywhere, it's still sitting there. I also know that, you know, the whole face of the town is changing. We're not preserving our rural lifestyle, because the people that are moving in and building these enormous homes don't care about horses, don't care about cows, and don't care about chickens. It's changing, and I hope that we can do something to preserve the lifestyle that we all moved here for. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Terri Shore.
Hi, I'm Terri Shore. I'm not good at speaking in front of people, but I'm going through the same issue. I live on 188th, and half of the neighbors couldn't make it because we just found out about the meeting tonight. Every little thing, somebody keeps calling and complaining about, okay, you have your horse trailer here, you have this, you have that, and we're getting cited. And it's getting a little out of hand, that, I mean, you just do one little thing and you're getting cited, and then it's just not fair. And Jennifer, you're more than welcome, put your trailer at my house, because you're allowed to have trailers at a house, but you can't have a friend's boat at a house. It just doesn't make any sense. So I'm just trying to talk for the neighbors down my block. There's a certain person that complains about everybody. Every little thing, there's a citation, a citation, a citation, and it's getting really out of hand. I mean, I feel like I live in an apartment complex instead of a house. It's, you know, and I have horses, and then people are complaining, oh, the poop, this, that, it's, it's just, like I said, you know, I'm trying to stay where I want to live, but in a way, I want to move. I'm done.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barry Malik. That's our last speaker.
Okay, passing. Board reports. Any board reports?
Last night, the Hysterical Society met, and we addressed the five acres and the use of the property, and we voted that it be used as a stabilized parking on the five acres, and then consider possibly an arena, which was recommended by the comp plan. But the recommendation was to put the arena and make it a performance arena. There are none in South Florida that you can have sanctioned big shows at. So if you have something like that, it would be a major asset. It can be used in all different aspects of the industry. Plus, it can be used for so many other things. But do the stabilized parking on the five acres so that in the future, if there's a panic and we have to get money somewhere, it's always there, and you're not tearing down something, you built on it, but it's a stabilized parking area. So your only investment would be, and it could be utilized with the arena for the parking. So that's what we voted on, and unfortunately, it wasn't in our minutes when we did the Parks Board, and so we'll have to address it next month, but we did talk about it, and the consensus was that they did not want to develop it, that they really wanted to focus more on the park. Thank you.
Any other board reports? Seeing no other board reports, we will move on to Councilmember Cummins. Would like to go first. Okay, Gary, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. I'll be brief, just have a few things to go over. Just some fun stuff coming up. In June, at the Equestrian Park, we have an amateur radio event, also known as ham radio. It's going to be on the 23rd, 24th, 25th, and what they're doing is a, I forget the exact term for it, but they're going to be trying to make contact with as many other stations around the world using mobile equipment, and they provide a very worthwhile service to the community, and it's all volunteer-based in the Amateur Radio League. And what they do is they can mobilize in times of hurricane emergency, i.e. when Hurricane Andrew hit, and when Hurricane Wilma hit us. But anyway, they're doing the demos, and these are basically practice runs, and it's part of their advanced hobby. It'll be at the Equestrian Park. So those of you, and they'll be doing demos where you can talk to people in Singapore, Tunisia, wherever, wherever they make contact with what's called a skip on their radios. So I just want to mention that. And also, the Parks Foundation is putting on two events here this summer. One is on the 24th, I believe it's at the barn. It's the History of Rum. Guaranteed, it's going to be an interesting conversation. Auderres will hopefully be served. And it's being put on by Dr. Knight, Astor's brother, who is, has a doctorate at, it's an Ivy League college, John Hopkins, thank you. And he's going to put on, he's given several demos, and I know a couple people in the audience have already been to it, to his lectures, they're not demos, I'm sorry, they're lectures. And I have a few of his books, and I've read him on, he writes the History of the Caribbean and things of that nature, and how rum played a major role in all the stuff that occurred in the last 500, 600 years. And it should be very interesting. Whether or not you participate in the sampling, it'd be kind of fun just to attend it. I'm not sure if there's a charge for it and what's involved in that. December, can you, could you come to the mic and answer that, just so I get the facts right, if you don't mind?
We're in the process of printing tickets, actually designing the tickets. The ticket price will be $35 per person. There will be food served, but it won't be dinner. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on June 24th, Saturday, June 24th. Should be a really nice event.
Yeah.
A nice little event before the rest of your evening happens, whatever that might be.
Sounds great. Don't go away, in case you need it for this one. We also have in August, on the 12th, we have bingo at the barn from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00. I believe the cost is $20 per ticket, that includes dinner.
Yep.
And dinner should be good. And we have a lot of fun with prize giveaways and things of that nature. And so, have I left anything out on that, or?
I don't think so. Your ticket cost includes dinner, a bingo card, and a raffle chance.
And additional cards can be purchased for a?
A dollar.
$5?
A dollar, $1.
$1? Okay, great. Thank you, December.
Thank you.
And that's all I got. I'm out of gas.
Awesome. Who wants to be next?
I'll go next.
Okay.
A quick note. We have a young lady by the name of Terri Ramirez that would like to join our Rural Public Arts Board. She's been a resident in Deems Ranches for many, many years, a great bongo player, I might add, and she would like to have the approval of council if she would be accepted to join our Rural Arts Board.
What does that make the count? Well, it's okay to be a lot, but it should be odd.
She's been attending a lot of the meetings lately, coming, and I think it still leaves it at an uneven number.
Actually, I think we had talked previously about expanding the board, and this would be an odd number.
Okay.
We didn't have a name attached to it, and this kind of fills in that blank.
Okay. All right. I'm good.
Yeah, absolutely. I've known Mrs. Ramirez since my kids were in Cub Scouts, because her kids were in Cub Scouts with them.
Well, I've known her since her kids were little, too.
She's really into our town.
Yes, she is.
And she lives over in, I believe, in the Deems Ranches area.
Deems Ranches, yes.
And she would be a wonderful addition to that board.
She's a great lady. She's a great lady.
Done.
My second thing I'd like to talk about is very hard for me. We lost a longtime resident, some may have known her as a Campanelli, and in fact, we've lost a couple Campanellis. Her uncle Eddie passed away a week ago, Sunday, and Joanne Campanelli, known as Joanne Puma, and then married Rich Hagan, and is known as Joanne Hagan, has passed away. And it is truly a loss. She was an extremely giving, kind person, and I would like everybody just to take a moment of silence and remember her in your thoughts. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Steve?
Whoever's next. Who wants to go next?
I'll go. I just wanted to respond a little bit to the public comment that we had tonight, and I just, as Gay alluded to, I don't think there's a quick fix to this, but it's something that has to be addressed. It goes to the base of who we are as a town, why we existed, why we chose to be our own town and not to hook up with another town. And I don't have the animals, but I have the same experience where property's around me built up, and any sort of rain event and the whole back of my property is useless. So I get what you're saying. I think this is, you know, something that we've really got to, I don't know if we need to do some workshops on or something, but we've got to find a way to address this, because it's, we've got to be able to protect the properties and the individuals that have been here since the beginning. And not just those folks, but people that have come here afterwards and had that same belief and that same lifestyle. And it's not, it's not to pit one group against the other. This is something that we, you know, as a town, it's a challenge for all of us, and we all need to come together and come up with a reasonable solution that protects everyone. And so, you know, unfortunately, I can't come before you and say, I've got the solution for you, but I can tell you this, that it's a serious problem. I think it's one of the biggest challenges facing our town right now, and we've got to address it. So thank you for being here tonight and bringing it up.
I'm going to join in with that just a minute, if I may. I think part of the conversation may have to be with Central and South Broward in addressing that moving forward. Because the only other solution, truthfully, in the rate it's going, is whoever's getting flooded is to get a permit to fill your property, but that costs money a lot of people don't have.
I'll be honest with you, I've never understood, I don't know if we want to get into the weeds on it tonight, but I've never understood the theory of retaining your own water. I understand, well, let me put it this way, I understand the theory, I've never understood the practice. Because water doesn't sit in one place, you know? Even if you have a berm there, it's going to go underground, it's going to come up on the other side. It's not, you know, it's just, it just doesn't happen.
Constantly equalizing.
Yeah, it's going to constantly equalize, you know? Unless you've got a, you know, a cement pool, that's about the only thing that's not going to constantly equalize, and even that does a lot of times, if you've got a small leak in it, you know? So it's, it's, it's an issue, yeah, that we've got to look at. You know, we did, a number of years ago, we were successful in lowering the water table, and that made a huge difference compared to what it would have been, but it didn't solve the problem. We still have the problem.
I'm guessing maybe one of them is that they don't allow people to fill their entire property only where their house bed is, but?
Mm-hmm, I think you're right.
That's just another thought process, moving forward, a discussion to help get a fix to that, hopefully sooner than later. So clearly, I don't know if we need to put it on the agenda for a discussion item moving forward.
I think we do. I think we, I think we need to pick a date that we can have it, and have maybe somebody, as you mentioned, you know, somebody from South Broward, Central Broward here, have somebody, obviously have code here, have, you know, engineering here, announce it enough time for the residents to come out. CAP here, you know, so that we can get a good cross-section of the residents, you know, their ideas, you know? Nine times out of 10, it's the residents that come up with the best idea on how to resolve some of this stuff. So, you know, I think we ought to put it out there far enough advance, get enough, you know, advertising and stuff out there that we can get a good cross-section of the town out there and get all the proper resources that the town can bring there to really have a good discussion.
Andy, got any ideas on how long that would take you to put that together?
Probably 30 to 60 days.
Okay.
Only because we've got to reach out to Central Broward, South Broward. You know, there's a lot of other people we need to reach out to and clear their schedules and come up with something that works.
Let me make sure.
From our standpoint, it's easy.
Is everybody on board with this?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, yeah, okay. So if you would put that in gear. You done? Freddie, you up?
I don't have much, other than the fact is, I just feel that I need to make this very clear, that, you know, I've heard us talk about selling the five acres, and I think it's ridiculous. You know, we've talked about open space, and open space, and open space. I don't care, I don't think the town needs money that we have to take and take any open space and sell it. Our job up here is to keep the plan that we said we were going to stick with and keep open space and stick with it. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I guess I'm up. I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, appreciate it. I get phone calls periodically from residents about different issues, and always appreciate the phone calls, so thank you. So any issues or whatever, if you don't know my cellphone number, it should be in the newsletter, and if it's not called Town Hall, I'm pretty sure they're authorized to give out my cell number. So if you all need me, feel free to call me.
We're going to give your number to everybody.
Okay. Call Gay Chapels, she has my number. Anyhow, so I don't need to give it to the TV show. Anyway, other than that, I don't have a whole lot else to tell you. You know, we're plugging away, trying to fix problems or whatever. I just want to make a couple of statements related to code. Code sometimes is not a cure-all fix. Sometimes you get into a scenario that you have a neighbor that has an issue, and another neighbor has an issue, and they go back and forth, and they're using code as a tool. And that should happen one or two times, and then ultimately, code should step away and say, that's a civil matter between the two of you, go address it in court. Because a lot of times, code can't fix some of those problems, it's just a back-and-forth, back-and-forth. But as far as the other issues, we, most of you know, we are, nobody likes code, and our code for what they do and how they function is, to me, the best you can get, because it's based on complaints. Unfortunately, the complaints are allowed to be anonymous, and sometimes people choose to be identified, other times they don't. I would say majority, they probably don't want to be identified. But if there's a complaint, code is required to respond to it. And sometimes, if there's a solution to it, the solution could take anywhere from a 90 to 120 days to get an issue resolved or fixed, and occasionally longer. So, but the way we have code is about the best any town like ours can have, as far as what we ask for and how we ask it to function. Now, every once in a while, we tweak it, and we add things to it for a hit list to make it a priority issue, and illegal fill, illegal dumping, overgrowth of vacant lots on the residential properties are some of the items that are on the hit list of upfront that we're proactive on. So I believe in the very near future, we're going to be adding a few things to the proactive list, which will be part of a discussion a little later this evening. But I think it's just going to be an initial thing. So those of you that are having issues, clearly, we're, a lot of us are aware of most of some of those things, and we are throwing them around and discussing them and trying to help get them fixed, but unfortunately, the way people have been able, are allowed to build and fill their entire property has not been, you know, they don't know any better, they're not, don't know they're not being neighborly, they don't have a clue. A lot of people come in and then ask for forgiveness, so I would tell you, we might want to increase some fines and penalties related to people doing the wrong thing and us not making them feel it. You know, the You know, the $500 fine, that's the cost of doing business for most people. If it's a $5,000 fine, they'll wake up and feel the pain. So you want to join in?
Yeah, I'd just like to say something. I personally think Robert is doing what his job has designed him to do. He is the enforcer. He does not set the rules or the laws. It was done by council, not by Robert. So when you jump in and get in poor Robert's face and you're screaming and yelling, remember, he's there to enforce what rules that we have set. So try to keep that in mind. It's not Robert's fault, he's just doing his job.
So there are rules and regulations that we probably need to address and tweak a little bit better than we have. We adopted a lot of Broward County stuff, and we tweaked a few things, but it's probably something we have to look at again in certain areas and issues to tweak it a little bit better. So anyhow, I would tell you that our code enforcement, for what we want, what we're looking for in this town, we couldn't have a better group or better company than we have now. Whether you're on the good side or bad side of that, I would tell you, you know, they're here to do the right thing and be helpful. And I would tell you, never ignore a citation, because ignoring a citation is just going to make it worse. If you address it, come to a hearing, I'm at most code hearings, I attend most of them. And you could ask for more time, and you could, they'll work with you to fix things if it's an issue. But if you ignore it, and you don't do anything, the magistrate sets a fine for so much a day, and that ticket just runs and runs and runs. And by ignoring it, it's going to cost you a lot more money than it would have if you just address it. So I would tell you anytime, I don't care if you call me, code, whoever, don't ignore it. The other thing is, is I try to step in and help anywhere I can. But I will tell you, if it's gotten to the magistrate and it's already been to a hearing, it's beyond me being able to help you. Ruling's already been set, things are in place, and I'm kind of out of the picture, I can't help you. But if it's beforehand, and you need time, and there's an issue, I don't mind stepping in to helping out if I'm able to. So just a heads up. All right, I'm done with my stuff. Let's see, legal comments?
All right. Thanks for having me. I'm glad to be able to sit here and see y'all and fill in for Keith while he's out tonight. He may make a guest appearance if he can make it here, but other than that, he's going to reserve any comments for the next meeting, and we'll go from there. But nice seeing everybody.
Awesome. Heads up, by the way, everybody that don't know, Keith's birthday is tomorrow. So, yeah. I was actually, Richard, Jared, I thought Keith might be here. I was actually going to go to Publix and get a cake and some brides or whatever, but so, we'll get him next meeting. All right. I guess we're, administration comments. Andy, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I don't have anything this evening.
Cool. All right. If you would read, number eight resolution, please, sir.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the 2017 amendments to the three interlocal agreements with Broward County, providing for the division and distribution of the proceeds of the local option gas tax, the Broward County Fifth Center Local Option Gas Tax, and the additional local option gas tax, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute said agreements and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment?
Bob Hartman, 5441, Southwest 198, Terrence. I've got a question that I am absolutely sure that our town finance director can answer. And that's, how much roughly does this gas tax bring into the town?
Marty, you're up.
Thank you, for the record, Marty Sherwood, Town Financial Administrator. Yes, for the current year budget, I'll look up the account within the Transportation Fund. The two components, this goes 100% to the Transportation Fund. Okay, the first one, which is the first local option fuel tax, that's the 6%. We receive approximately $75,000 a year within the fund, the Transportation Fund. The second local option fuel tax is $53,500 in total. And then the transportation component of the state revenue sharing portion of the gas tax, $38,329. It's a, in the grand perspective, because the Transportation Fund also includes our tisdor projects, drainage projects, it's a small component. It helps subsidize all the activities that take place within the fund. However, it's not enough to completely cost-recover the total amount of efforts and priorities that council has for the entire budget year.
All right, thank you, Marty, appreciate it. Any other public comment? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed, back to the council. Any questions? Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number nine, please, sir.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a two-year service agreement with Cleaning Systems, Inc., also known as CSI, to provide janitorial services at Town Hall, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into the agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Andy, I'm going to pass it down to you on this, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Since we moved into this building, we've had a company called CSI has been doing our cleaning services and did a real good job for us, but we came to the end of that contract. Last year, we went out to bid, and CSI was the second lowest-priced respondent. We had somebody else who came in with a lower price, so we awarded the contract to them, we moved forward with the new vendor. They've, in short, I'll say have done a horrible job, including a very serious security breach a couple of weeks ago. So we fired them immediately, and so what staff would like to do is go back to CSI, who was our previous vendor and was the second lowest-priced when we went out to bid on this again. So we're asking you to formalize that and let us go back to our previous vendor. Thank you.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment closed? Any questions up here? We're all good? Call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 10, please.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the release of Core Civic, Inc., formerly known as Corrections Corporation of America, Inc., from that certain letter of credit relating to the construction of the Southwest 202nd Avenue improvements, now that the town is the owner of the property, and further providing that the future construction of improvements shall be performed in accordance with those standards of the Broward County Highway Construction and Engineering Division, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, public comment closed? Richie, you don't have anything to add on this one, do you?
Nope.
Okay. You want to ask any?
Yeah, well, I just, I think, I think, just for the Publix benefit, I think we need to have a little bit of an explanation on this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, be happy to explain this. When CCA originally purchased that property out west in, I believe it was in the late 90s, part of their sales agreement included, they bought the property from Bergeron, and Bergeron was required to put in a road to provide access to the property. CCA purchasing that property had to put up a line of credit with the county for that road. CCA is no longer the owner of the property, the town has purchased that property, we are the owner of that property. And so what we're doing here by this resolution is actually releasing CCA from that line of credit, but not releasing Bergeron from their obligation to build the road at whatever future date it becomes necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Andy, and I apologize, just came to mind, how do we speed up Bergeron building the road? Is there a mechanism to do that, or is, do we have to, you know, part of the sale?
I think it's just a question, when the property is being developed, that will trigger the requirement to have the roadway done. Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you want to call the question?
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Discussion item on residential commercial businesses. I'm going to pass this to Steve, I think, to start off, if that's okay?
That's great.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Shirley.
This is an item that several residents of the town brought to me to bring up for discussion, and I mentioned at the last meeting that we would start pursuing this, and I appreciate the support of the board and the council in at least looking into this. I don't know, it's right there. And so what I wanted to do was have the opportunity tonight to open up the floor, get some resident feedback on this. But let me give you a little bit of what I'm hearing and what I think the direction of this should be. I want to be clear that this is not, so what this is, commercial businesses that are going on in our town. So what I'm not hearing complaints about and what is not an issue are small businesses, accountants, or, you know, people that have their own business in their own house with little impact. The areas where I am hearing impact and issues with are larger, really, commercial establishments that are operating in our town. You know, generally speaking, commercial establishments are in commercial areas, and they get taxed accordingly. And there's a reason why they pay more in taxes, it's because they generate a lot more expense. They generate traffic on the roads, they generate additional waste, they generate, you know, everything from more water and sewer to, you know, everything about them generates more expense. They generate usually more cost as far as public services like police and fire. So for all those reasons, they generally pay commercial taxes for that, and they're in commercial districts where the roads are sufficient to handle it and all the elements are there in place. But in our town, there's a lot of commercial businesses that operate out of their house that have a lot of vehicles, that they may have numerous employees, all driving to the house, getting into vehicles, and then all driving out, and then in the evening, all driving back in and getting back to their vehicles, and then all driving back out again. There are situations where they have manufacturing or other type of businesses there, where they bring in large amounts of material that they then manufacture, and then it's shipped out. And all that material that's brought in is, goes out as residential waste, which then goes against everybody in town, their cost for residential waste pickup. It should be segregated, in my opinion, it should be segregated and go into a commercial disposal unit that the commercial unit would then pay for. In fact, that's already on the books, it's supposed to be that way, but there's little way to enforce it, and so it rarely gets come into play. So there's other situations where there are, you know, all kinds of businesses, whether it's movers or roofers or whatever, where there's a large number of vehicles that are in town. There are situations where multiple vehicles come into town and the house itself isn't a, isn't a business per se for those vehicles, they're just renting the space for these other vehicles to come in and park and then leave. So, you know, all of these things are going on in our town. They are, are, an impact, a serious impact, I believe, on our rural lifestyle and what we really are designed to be here in Southwest Ranches. You know, we're designed to be an agricultural rural community, not a hotbed of commercial establishments because, you know, we don't have all the elements to enforce it. So those are the, some of the comments that I've heard, those are some of the things that I've experienced firsthand, and so that's why I wanted to have this time for discussion tonight. I would love to hear from residents that have an interest in this area. I know I had two residents that contacted me about this that were, oh, I had many residents, but I had two that were...
George, you're late.
That were, you know, specifically wanted to speak on it, that are not able to be here tonight, but hoping that we'll be able to have a good discussion regardless. So, and welcome any thoughts from the council as well.
I would like to bring up Robert with code enforcement briefly to...
That'd be great.
...give a little bit of what the code is now and kind of where we are.
Good evening, everyone, and I wanted to take a couple of minutes, if I may. First of all, to thank you all for the support that you provide us with, and to the fact of the kind words that you provided just before. Code enforcement, like you mentioned, is a very difficult job. I've been doing this for 30 years, and I don't kid around when I say 30 years. First Miami-Dade County, Sonny Isles, a number of other locations. It is very difficult. Nobody likes code enforcement. The problem is, when you have a resident, and then you have a roofing company next to you, which has 15 employees, which may not be the best employees or people you want to have around, and you have an underage kid which walks through the school, and then you find this issue, and then code enforcement is very important. We are here, in my opinion, to educate more than enforce. And that's the idea behind the town council's mindset, and that's what he has been giving to us, where we are reactive instead of proactive. We have a number of codes, which are in effect right now, which you all passed, which we don't enforce unless somebody calls. Unfortunately, as the mayor indicated, if we receive a call, we have to answer the call, we have to go out. If there's a call violation, which is in the books, unfortunately, we have to address it. We try our best to work with everyone, providing extensions, providing time, providing education, trying to work the situation and try to resolve the issue without having to impose any fines. It is a misconception that, you know, we enforce fines that go up to $300,000 or $200,000. Unfortunately, that's not the case. Code enforcement is not a production of money. It should be one that provides citizens with the help necessary to make sure that property values remain the same and are not affected by the fact that others did not follow the rules. But beyond that point, and be, you know, if I may, like I mentioned before, we have Article 45, which is agriculture and rural districts. And that article encompasses anything that is agriculture and anything that is not agriculture. And when I say agriculture, are those places which perhaps operate as agricultural, but they do not have the exception from the county. And the exception for the agriculture exemption from the county provides them with more leeways in all the locations which they don't have. And the code is in place. We have a code for the amount of vehicles that are allowed on those locations, agriculture or not. We have a code in place for the items that can be sold from the location. We have a code against staging in locations, as Vice Mayor indicated, where we have nurseries where there's 20 or 30 vehicles which are just being staged. Basically, they go from there to do the labor, to cut grass on somebody's house, not because they are providing anything to those locations from whatever they create, you know, say like plants or what have you that are grown on location. It's just a matter of going out and doing grass cutting for somebody else. We have commercial vehicles, as I mentioned before, requirements, cells, you name it, we have it in place. It's just a matter of that, again, like I said, we are reactive, not proactive. So perhaps tweaking on that and perhaps scenarios, for instance, and I mentioned to all of you in some way, formal, you know, one way or another, is to have nurseries which their certificate of use are done on a yearly basis. There's a big, these are big enterprises, and we're not talking about the small businesses as Vice Mayor indicated, of an air-conditioned guy, or perhaps somebody who's a doctor, or somebody who has a computer at home. But locations where you have a number of trucks that can be identified on a yearly basis as to whether they are there this year or whether they're more... basis as to whether they are there this year or whether they're more next year, what impact it's creating on the streets surrounding it. And that's one of the biggest issues out west in terms of traffic, 188 and number of the locations. So perhaps a tweaking of the certificate of use, requiring perhaps for those nurseries to have to renew it on a yearly basis, so we have an inspection on a yearly basis, it's not a matter of making money, it's a matter of trying to find out what is the impact and how it changed from one year to the next. And I entertain any other questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Robert. Thank you.
All right, anybody in the public want to come up and share some thoughts or ideas?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I had a home business for many, many years, and restoring historical homes and businesses. And I had a pickup truck, and it generally had a lot of stuff in the back of it, but it was one truck because I was one person. And what we have set up when we started our town was those that bring their trucks home for their business, and my business was at my house, that's where it was licensed. Those trucks are legal, and if my son had gone into business with me and he had a truck, that truck also would be legal. But if I hired a third guy and brought a third truck home, that truck is not legal. When you reach a certain point in a business, you need to have a staging area, not at your There are certain exceptions on that under certain agricultural properties and agricultural work, because of the number of pieces of equipment that are needed in agricultural work. But those, there's this fine line that sort of wiggles back and forth, where you could have two or three sons working with you and therefore have four trucks at the house. Now, if the people, your crew, come and meet you at the house, that's wrong. They should meet at the McDonald's or some other place in the early morning in Publix parking lot, whatever. Because I met people that, when I was picking them up and taking them to work, they were at my house. So we have that situation. The ones that are really egregious, where, you know, they've got 30 trucks and they're parking in their renting lot back there and everything else, and they got people living back there and travel trailers and all that sort of stuff, that's all legal, we know that. There needs to be a way to find out those people, and maybe we could start the Southwest Ranches Air Force and get a couple of drones, and a couple of Hellfire missiles too, but, you know, whatever. So, but I'm talking about that fine line where it's your business, your house, and it's your truck, and you're taking it and bringing it home. And also, when you work for a company, you bring the truck home, that's legal also. But when you get multiple trucks, that's where the problem is, and that's what, we got to find what that line is and address that. So, thank you.
Thanks, though. Take your time, take your time, you'll get there.
Dealing with old age disease.
But you're still
Mr. Letta.
You're still on this side of the grass.
Southwest Ranches. I brought this item up 16 years ago, and I was told at that time by the administrator that looked into it, that it wasn't economically feasible. What makes it so prevalent now? Except we have additional residents, and as far as Mr. Hollingsworth, I always said, if the product is grown on the property, and it is not considered, or shouldn't be considered a business. When you've got businesses like, I got a cabinet maker down the street, and ladies selling I don't know why it's so prevalent now, when I told you 16 years ago that we've had underlining businesses within the town of Southwest Ranches, and presumably, people have found out that they could move here and have a business without having a home occupational license. So that's my question, how come it's so prevalent now?
I believe the answer is a lot more people are complaining.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198 Terrace, also known as Bob Hartman Photography. I'm glad to see you're not going after the true small businesses. I mean, a lot of these guys that have 15 trucks in an AC business consider themselves small business too. But on my street, we've got an attorney, he practices out of his house, we've got a CPA, same thing. You know, have I never had a client come to the house for me to shoot pictures of my beautiful yard? I'd be lying, Dee's daughter I shot in my backyard. I mean, that's part of it. No different than, you know, around in April, a CPA is going to have some people come to the house these days, it'll all done on the internet, but still people will stop by. The same thing with the attorney. But the majority of my business is practiced in photography studios, public parks, not at my house. And I'm sure it's the same with the attorney as well, they don't hold court on 198 Terrace. But to your point, and it's a shame John Eastman's not here tonight, because if you drive down 188th, I believe there's a roofing company which was used as an example, I know there's a couple of large landscape companies that don't park a truck or two in the backyard, there's 20 trucks. There's a guy that runs a business right off of Griffin Road that, these businesses belong in a commercial or an industrial area. You drive through that quadrant down there by the turnpike in US 27, there's dozens of businesses where the guys come, they park in the morning, they take off in their trucks, they go do whatever it is they do, all the things we just named and a thousand other things. They get back in, they get in their cars, and they go home. That place is geared towards it. My street is not, none of our streets are. I mean, if you live on Griffin Road, that's probably slightly different, but it's still a residential area. You know, I have a unfortunate situation where I live within earshot of Bergeron's industrial park, give me another minute. And on the weekends, I hear the shipping containers grating against each other, I hear stuff happening over at the Sidisco yard, the wrecking yard. Unfortunately, I live next to an industrial area and there's nothing I can do about it. But when the guy on the next street is fixing boat engines all weekend long for hire, and he's got 15 boats parked in the yard because that's what he does, that's not conducive to residential living, that's not the right thing. So, I don't want to come down on everybody, but there are certain businesses that, hey, if you've got 15 trucks out there, you're making a couple of nickels, go rent space in the appropriate place and do the right thing for your neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, we were not going to do licensing, that's not where you're headed, right?
I don't know.
Okay, because there was a reason why they said
We're looking at suggestions.
It just was not economically feasible.
That's correct.
And most everybody that's in business has a license of some sort. Let me cut to the chase on this, I would imagine that most of this is geared towards the landscape companies predominantly, or somebody who has a lot of trucks and he's running his asphalt company out of there, or something of that nature.
Yep.
Out west more than in Sunshine Ranches, if there is anything in Sunshine Ranches, I doubt seriously if it'll stay there long because that is primo property for mansions. So I've seen a lot of them disappear in that area. I would say most of this is happening out west, because either they're larger pieces of property that were nursery properties, or they're the one-acre home sites predominantly on 188th, really. And they buy the house or they rent it, and then they put up a privacy fence and they load it up with whatever company they're doing, most of them are landscape companies, and they drive in, park the cars, drive out with the landscape equipment. I mean, that can be stopped, we have laws. I am 110% against more laws, I really am. We have enough to enforce what they're breaking, the laws that they're breaking now.
I don't think we're looking at making any new ones, I think we're more discussing putting more on the hit list of upfront ones that are already on the books and enforcing them.
So that would be more people that you want to go after the ones that are in extreme violation, because we do have it pretty clear, I mean, the comp plan worked very hard for a couple of years to make sure that we could be protected. For instance, horse trailers on these properties that have barns or horses, they can have innumerable horse trailers, there's no limit to the number of horse trailers they can have on their property or cars parked, because those are the people that are there to ride or, you know, take care of their horses. Same thing for the nurseries have a certain percentage of traffic that goes in and out, you know, purchasing or they move trees, big trees or whatever. But I think that this thing really boils down to the fact that we have commercial, a few, more landscape companies than anything, but we have a few other type of companies that are operating to excess. I mean, my grandson works on his airboat, if you listen to him, it brings back memories of when he revs up that motor to see if it's running, like there's a 450, whatever they are, coming down the runway. I mean, that thing is really loud, he doesn't do it at 1:00 in the morning, but, you know, when this was brought up about the noises, you know, you have to be respectful, and he's not building them commercially. If somebody is building something commercially and they have 15 cars, then you've got a problem. But I don't want to see any more laws. If you're going to go after the ones that are breaking the laws
I don't think we're looking to make any, don't worry.
Don't allow a neighbor to report them, I'm sure you already know who they are, and just send code out there to enforce it, notify them and shut it down, it's that simple. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? I want to tell a quick story, like this council will probably remember it. I wasn't on the council at the time, but somebody moved into town and bought a $2 or $3 million house. They couldn't get code enforced and do anything about the chickens next door that were roosting and howling at 3:30 in the morning. And they complained and complained and complained, and they were so mad nobody'd do anything, they came to the council here and complained to the council and said, look, we spent $3 million on this pretty new house, it's beautiful, we love it here, but the chickens next door start howling at 3:30 in the morning, they won't shut up. We said, well, the council told them, we're really sorry, we don't enforce, you know, farm noises and stuff. Do you guys remember that?
Remember that, yeah.
Yeah, so anyhow.
We opened the wrong neighborhood.
Yeah, so we said, we're really sorry, we're not doing anything about it, and I don't know if they sold and moved or whatever, but that just gives you the example that we do stick up for the farming people, come on up.
Does that mean I need to get more chickens and just put them all along my fence line where my neighbor is? Maybe that'll work.
I think they were talking about roosters at that time.
Oh, I'll get roosters, lots of them.
Whatever it was, but it was noises.
And I'll feed them at like 4:00 in the morning.
Yeah, but it was roosters, they had, you know, like 30 of them, and it was like, what do you have 30 roosters for, no chickens, come on?
Well, what I'd like to ask is a, I guess it would be more of a code question, it's been recommended to me, well, let me start off with, if you know the neighbor that's constantly calling code on you to the point where it's become almost harassment, it's actually been recommended to me to hire an attorney to get him to not harass me because he's coming to the town, and it is him, and getting the code to come after us. Is there anything in the town that protects our residents from neighbors who move in, who are the ones that are going to code and saying, you've got to go do this, do that, do this, do that?
You know, that's a partial legal question, but I would tell you my conversations I've had in the past with code, because it's been an issue of back and forth with people, and, you know, we said, look, we're not doing anything for either one of you anymore, to both parties, and said, you know, this is a civil matter, go get yourself an attorney. So I can tell you, that's happened in the past, I don't know where your situation's at at the moment, I'm not going to give you any legal advice, but I would tell you that tit for tat, code is not a tool to use back and forth kind of thing. Code is an issue that if there's really a problem, you deal with it, but because somebody has a problem, they're going to make a problem for the other person because you're calling on them or they're calling on you, so it actually turns into a civil matter under that scenario. But, so I don't know the answer to that. I would tell you, it never hurts to call an attorney and get advice. That's
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks for coming out to see us tonight, George, appreciate it.
George, it's good to see you.
I'm glad you're still here.
I have a little bit of problem with your code. I think we ought to abolish it or get it tamed down some. To go to a house and threaten somebody $500 if you don't get this moved and stuff, I think that's bad. I don't think that's the right thing to do. I think you should go there and warn them, you need to do this or that, but you don't say, I'm going to, I'm going to charge you $500 a day if you don't move that. I think that's wrong. And I got equipment that I worked in this town when it wasn't a town, it was county, and you could live and do whatever you want here. Then we made it a town, and now you get all these people moving in these five, six, $10 million homes, they don't want to hear chickens, they don't want to see cows. A cow got out the other day, code enforcement called the owner and said, cow's out, you need to fix your fence, run right over there and fix it, before they ever called. Cows get out, horses get out, because this is Southwest Ranches, it's livestock. And if these people don't want to live with livestock, they shouldn't move in here. Behind my house, that was all dairy, there wasn't no houses. I had cow dogs that I worked the cows with, they'd bark when a coon or a cat come by, people were calling me next door, there's 80-foot or 90-foot canal plus another 100 and so feet to their house. The reason they called, because in the wintertime, they roll their damn windows down, we don't have to pay for the air conditioning, and they hear the cows, the dogs, in the same way with my house, I don't hear no dogs, but I keep my windows up and I got the air conditioning on. And my neighbors the same way. I've got dump trucks and stuff at my place that I worked on all these houses out here in Southwest Ranches, and I never had any problem until the county said, can't have commercial vehicles on your property. And I said, well, you tell me what ranch that don't have commercial vehicles on it.
Go ahead.
You understand what I'm talking about? And I went to court on it, right? They tried to take an acre and a half away from me, guess what? They lost. It's agriculture, and you're allowed, agriculture, you're allowed to build a barn without a permit, you're allowed to put a septic tank in without a permit. You can do all these things, and it's there in the state, get a piece of paper and you can read it. If you don't want to live with cows and horses and chickens, don't move out here. And these people, that's what they want to do, they come out because it's kind of urban, and then they go bananas and they want to call on you and do stuff. But, I mean, it's not right, you know? And like when I was here, this was all wetland, Davie was all wetland, and if you go to build on something, it's got a 25 or 30-foot little spot, and the road's four foot here, four foot there, and the two houses are 10-foot, they want you to pay $10,000 or $15,000 to get that mitigated. And I tell you what I did, when I knew the town was taking over, I filled my whole five and a half acres in, because I knew exactly, you drop a load of dirt at one of these places and somebody don't like it, they call on you. It's just gotten to be It's just gotten to be, it's terrible here. This is agriculture. If it ain't agriculture, what do we need to be doing? These people are building these big old homes, and they all got something to say about it, and it's just pure ridiculous. You've got a boat in your yard, you can't have it. When this was county, you could have as many boats as you want there. Why move out here if you don't want this? You know, that's me. But it's the way things are. But the code enforcement, you need to get rid of it, or tone it down. Because you don't need to be threatened. And none of them need to go in your house. Let one of them come in my house to see what's going on in my house? And we're going to have major problem. You get a search warrant or warrant, then you can come in here. But you ain't going to come in here and look at my house. And I know this one girl out here, that's what they want to do, code enforcement. And that's bull crap. And that's all I got to say.
Thanks, George. Go ahead.
Last fall...
John, you don't need to fill a form out. It's open comment.
Last fall, I spoke to plenty of neighbors, and one of the issues that I had spoke about code enforcement, I had tossed around an idea, and I guess this would be a time to express an idea that I had, is that when... First of all, I'm not a person who says, "Go tattletale and go complain." And I guess some people, certain parts of our body are a little too tight. And I thought, "Well, why don't we have something, a prerequisite in the code enforcement to say, 'Hey, have you tried to work this out with your neighbor'?" Because, you know, we're neighbors in the town. "Have you tried to work this out, and has that resulted in a failure?" And then code enforcement could come in and do something. That was just an idea that I had. Thanks.
Thank you. John, we're on the commercial vehicle stuff, so come on up.
We might even give you more in three minutes.
Thanks. Hi, John Eastman, 188th Avenue. You know, my primary concern with code enforcement is when we allow a lot of commercial activity at private homes, not only is it against the code, but it generates significant levels of commercial traffic on our neighborhood. I'm speaking specifically about the 188th, 185th, 190th region there, because I know that. Other parts of town have their own issues. And we have about six people on our street, on 188th, that operate full-time commercial businesses from their property. Now, the town's very lenient allowing, you know, commercial vehicles to come home at night with the driver. But that doesn't mean that they can operate these vehicles in and out all day long. And the neighbors don't like it. And I usually get the phone call, and I'm the bad guy who has to call code. I just, I tell Robert, "I'm just passing this through, because the neighbor does not want to sign on the complaint," which is fine. I'm happy to do it. But we need some sort of proactive enforcement of commercial businesses operating out of single-family homes. Some people might operate a single-man business. That's fine, because there's no impact. But when you have a company operating a roofing supply, or, you know, high-vac business with service trucks, deliveries, bulk waste, that sort of thing, it's way over the top. And that one home may be generating 30 to 40 trips a day on the road. Now, 188th is not a cut-through. It's a neighborhood. It's just like all the cul-de-sac neighborhoods in Weston, except we have a straight road. We're not gifted with the round road that keeps most of the through traffic out. But when we have those five or six bad apples on the street, and, you know, code ignores them...
Go ahead.
This is why we need a little proactive muscle to be able to come out and, at very least, regulate it. You know, let the owners know what they can and can't do, and enforce it. Don't come out and slap their wrist, and then, you know, two weeks later, they're back to normal operation, which is what happened on our street. You know, and I'm tired of it. I can't chase it around anymore. I'm done with it. But I think you get the idea. I think you're on the right path. You're, you know, bringing this up and looking at it. But with me, it's all traffic generated, because really, my children are entitled to use the road on their bikes. And since they're born, they can't. My daughter's 10. I can't allow her out there. We got some big-time relief, and I want to thank the whole council and everybody in the town for, you know, the 190th opening up. It has really given us more sense of neighborhood now. And tonight, as I was pulling out, there's people out walking, you know, riding. The kids are out. And we kind of have a sense of community back to our street. But during the day, we still have all this commercial activity. And we've got all the commercial activity south of 63rd contributing to it with, you know, workers, deliveries, normal business activities. Now, they pay taxes. They're entitled to use the road. But we really need to start working on a road for them to get in and out on. And, you know, we had looked at it a couple of years ago in the infrastructure board. Let's dust it off and see if we can do it. Because if we can get that road installed at about $1 million and a half, all of a sudden, every single piece of land in there is plottable. Now you can use it. You can build it. And the tax rolls will significantly increase, way up and beyond what the cost of the road is. It will encourage those owners to develop the properties and put them on the tax rolls, either with private homes or other uses. So I urge that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? All right. Seeing a public comment close. George, you coming up, George? George Morris, that is. You want to come up? Come on up. We have somebody else coming up other than you. You can be next, George.
I would like to say that I have been the lucky recipient of probably seven code violation notices that came. And I like the idea that the other gentleman brought up about trying to, you know, work something out with someone if you have a problem with them, as opposed to calling code as a first line of action. Results in a certified letter being sent. I work Monday through Sunday. I work night hours. I'm on call to hospitals. And I have to go all the way out to 27 to pick, go out and pick up a certified letter that I find out was from code for leaving my truck on the street overnight. I think there's a lot of vindictive frivolous behavior that goes on when you're allowed to be an anonymous complainer. I think that you should have to state your name, where you live, and what the problem is, and that it was unresolvable. And then you come to code to try to resolve the problem. And I have to say that Mr. Solero and Julio have, of course, been my contact people. And they have both been very nice and worked very well with me to try to resolve the issues that I'm having. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, Deb. George, you up?
Go ahead, George. Get gutsy. Get up here.
Come on. You're not going to be happy if you don't put in your two cents.
May I start at something you don't want to start?
Okay, come on.
Start the clock.
Code enforcement. Code enforcement, actually, they do a good job. They're up against a big thing here, you know? At the end of the day, they should have a round of applause, because they do do a good job. I think sometimes they go over the top. I think sometimes we lose our focus in the town. I was here in 2000, or even before that, where we all said, "Let's make our own city. Let's preserve our rural lifestyle. Let's get away from Weston Pembroke Pines and all this baloney." But we're here talking about proactive, and chasing down people with landscaping equipment and stuff like that. Perhaps there are some situations where it is over the top. But there are other families that live in this town, that live in the house, that grow their own material, that by default, they get into the landscape business, and that's their livelihood, and so they buy a truck or two, and, you know, their business expands. And now you want to penalize them and haul their trucks away. It's just, we're getting over the top. There's a balance, you know? We have to find that balance for everybody, to be, again, proactive and chasing everybody, and putting more of a burden on code. It's too much. There's a middle ground. We need to find it. I think, you know, I don't want to see us go too far to the left, or too far to the right. And we have to take time approaching this and come with the right approach. That's all.
Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else? Seeing no additional public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to us to discuss. Dee, you want to pitch in here, or what?
No, I'm not going to touch this one.
I'll jump in.
I'm fine.
All right, go ahead, Gary.
Thank you, everybody, for coming up and giving us your opinions. I can rest assured up here on the council and the dais that nobody has any intentions of doing anything against agriculture-related property, equine, rowing, you know, a few bad app... Cows, especially cows. I've got, like I said, I've got cows. I'm surrounded by them where I live, and it's great, you know, as far as I'm concerned, horses and cows, and chickens and goats, and, you know, one very old husky. And so that, you know, rest assured on. This is a real slippery slope, and we've entertained this conversation, discussion, many times over the years, many, many times over the years. And we became a town, I think, predominantly because of that. Because if we didn't, we'd be, everybody would be answering Pembroke Pines code right now, code enforcement, magistrate, whatever. And let me tell you, they wouldn't be listening. You know, I mean, they wouldn't be listening. We're listening. We're listening very intently. A few bad apples, as one of the speakers mentioned, a few bad apples have spoiled it for everybody, and they've abused the system. I know in my neighborhood, I believe it was a year or two ago, we had, I'm not going to name it, but we had an air conditioning company that was taking home a lot of stuff that was being repaired. And they had a huge fire. It involved like a half an acre, and just practically burned down that whole area and a nursery around it. And my cars were covered in soot when I went out the next day. That's how, and I'm a mile away, and that's how extensive it was. So, you know, you have people who are abusing this. And the clear violators, I think, are the ones that we need to direct, you know, any kind of code enforcement to that. Nobody wants to turn in their neighbors. Nobody wants to do this. And then you have people that are using code as a tool or a weapon, you know, for vendetta-style thing, you know? People who don't have horse trailers, don't have boat trailers, you know, they have no idea how much fun it is to back a trailer up and move it around, especially with a live animal in it. They really don't, you know? And so it's a foreign concept to them. And that's a lot of the new people that we have in here. And maybe we need to educate them on it. I don't know. I, you know, I don't have a great answer for that, other than I can tell you, it's a real field day when you're, you know, when you're dealing with boat trailers, as boat owners all know, you know, here. And I'm one of them. The middle ground that George was talking about, George Morris, when he was talking about with code, we've, I think we've seen that on a sliding scale go back and forth over the years. I am definitely not for any additional laws. I think we need to enforce what we have. But I think we need to be very, very careful with it. Like I said, I'm getting back to the slippery slope here, and I'm real hesitant. I don't think we need a commercial license, you know, anything even remotely like that. We currently have a certificate of use. And we also get, most people don't realize that, but if they filed for Broward County, we actually get a portion of the Broward County tax. I think it comes back to us at like $43. I had Andy research it a long time ago. You know, so there is some money that comes out of legitimate businesses, you know, for that. Yeah, I'd hate like all get out to see, you know, CPA who has one employee, you know, suddenly get swept up in this. When we've got down the street, I know in my street, there's one area where there's probably seven different lawn companies. They come in. They come in in the morning. They come out at, you know, at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock. You can just sit there and watch them go by, you know? I'm not sure where they end up at, because I never bothered to, you know, to chase them down. That's not what we do up here, you know, something like that. But there's some clear violators in abusing the system. Do I have a magic wand? No, I don't think anybody up here does, to be real honest with you. But I think the clear violators should be brought to account on that, you know, regarding non-agricultural-related items. I think that's the biggest, that's the biggest ones that we seem to be having a concern with. If it's ag-related, you know, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, you know, with animals, horse boarding, you know, all that. And don't have, you know, more the merrier, as far as I'm concerned. You know, we need more of that, not less of it. And we don't need to be chasing people down because they got a trailer, you know, in their right-of-way, or stuck on the street, or, you know, I can't tell you the number of times I parked the boat trailer in where it probably shouldn't have been, but, you know, had to do it for whatever reason. You know, these things happen, and that's why we lived out here. That's why we moved out here, you know, stuff like that. So I just want to caution the rest of the council to be very careful with this. This is, it's a real slippery slope.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Dee.
You have to be careful that you don't pick and choose. You can't make fish of one and follow the other. There are people that reside in this town. One of the gentlemen that I'm thinking of, he drives a semi. That's his living. That's what he does. He brings that semi down these roads every single day, twice a day, to leave and to come back. Those semis take and really take and tear up the roads. But this is his, this is his thing that he does. It's not like he's got more coming. He has tried to conceal it. He's had neighbors call in the past. I know, I know, because it was in an area where I used to live. And then finally, I guess, everybody just got tired and stopped. Now you talk about horse trailers. You don't have any horses, but you've got nine trailers on your property. Okay, do they all belong to you? Do we go in and do we check it? I mean, I wouldn't bother with it, because it's just a horse trailer. But there are people complaining about it. And he lives in our town. He doesn't have any horses, but there's nine trailers on his property. And so there you go, picking and choosing again. Who gets turned in? You know, are you proactive? You've got to remember one thing. How rural do you want to stay? You can go into areas out west, and when I say out west, I don't mean out west in Florida. I mean out west, where anything goes on their property, anything. And then you can go into other areas where they also have rules and regulations, you know? Farmers don't want their places all cluttered up and looking nasty and bad, and just somebody dumping old stuff there. And then, you know, 14 years later, this guy now looks like he's got a graveyard for a bunch of junk. So you have to think about how rural you want to be on this. None of us want any more rules. We didn't want the rules we had, George. We were happy being unincorporated. But we were put between a rock and a hard place, and we had to make a decision. And I think we made a great decision to become this wonderful little place that we live in, to be ourselves. So we have to be very careful about the rules that we implement to ourself. Are we going to be proactive? We became a little proactive after the hurricane hit because of the garbage. And once everything settled down, we all backed off, and it was fine. So maybe we have to hit this really hard for a little while, until we get rid of some of the bigger businesses. And there are some big businesses, and you're right, most of them are out west. And they don't need to be there. We don't live in Hialeah, or certain parts of Davie, where they have those type of areas, or even in Weston. Weston has storage units and all that stuff. We don't have that. We don't want it. So you really need to put some thought into, like I said, who you pick and choose, and, you know? I mean, the guy with the semi, he got turned in constantly, and I felt so bad, because it was, you know, that was his bread and butter. That's how he made a living, and he tried really hard to conceal it. And he would get up early in the morning and sneak out, and come in real late at night. I mean, he tried. He tried to be decent to his neighbors, and they just didn't want any part of it. And finally, one day, you know, he just said, "You know, I'm out of here." He sold and left. Thank you.
Freddie, Steve? Freddie's good. You good?
Yeah, no, I'm...
Go ahead.
Just kind of a final comment, or a few comments, I guess. One is, I just appreciate everybody coming out and making your comments, because it's really helpful to hear resident feedback. It really is. Some of the things, a lot of things I heard tonight reinforced what, you know, I felt like I had already heard from other residents. I'll be clear that I didn't hear anything tonight that says we need new laws or regulations. I didn't hear anything that, what I heard was that there is a lot of... I didn't hear anything that, what, what I, what I heard was that there is a lot of ordinance and, and laws out there that we already have on the books, that we, you know, understand are important, but they're not being enforced. And so I think what this is more about is finding the right balance, the right middle of road, uh, there, where we can, um, address those most egregious issues. The ones that are over the top. Um, I'm not, I'm certainly have no interest in, you know, the individuals that have businesses. And frankly, I have, I have little or no interest in the ones that could kind of go either way. I'm interested in the ones that are over the top, that are taking, clearly taking advantage of the situation, and running a, you know, an intensive commercial business in a residential neighborhood that affects traffic, affects our costs, affects our waste, affects everything we do, um, to, you know, take away the, the lifestyle that we moved out here for. So, um, given that feedback, um, practically, I'll say one other thing. I actually heard a few things tonight that make me think that there's a couple ordinances on the books that we need to look at to possibly eliminate, to be honest with you, more than, more than ad, ad ordinances.
I agree with it.
Um, so, uh, and I'm, I'm open to that, absolutely. Um, but, um, I hope that this has given, um, the administration the feedback that is helpful to kind of provide some guidance on where to go next. Um, yeah, let me just, yeah, and then I'll, and, and I just want to say one other thing, um, related to code itself. And that is that, uh, I, I just want to back up, that I think we're very fortunate to have the organization and the individuals that we have here, um, enforcing code. It's, it's, it is clearly the most, one of the most difficult, and I will say clearly the most, the least thankful job, um, that a town has. And we are very fortunate to have the staff, um, that are, and, you know, the integrity they have, the honesty they have, and, and their, um, desire to resolve it without fines, and just, just get it right. So, I, I just want to get that on the record. Yeah, Andy, if you can provide a little feedback-
Yeah, if I may. First of all, let me just say that whatever the challenges are of my job, I, I don't want Roberts.
(laughing)
No, I, I, this has been a very good discussion, we got a lot of good input, and I, and I think, you know, I sense a, a theme of what's, what the biggest problem is. Certainly, staff, from our standpoint, we're not recommending more laws or changes. This is very much a policy decision. It's what council directs what you want us to do, and I know you make those decisions based on the input from the residents. So this was a very, very useful discussion. I've got a couple of pages of notes from here. I know that Robert has taken extensive notes as well. We'll probably wind up going back and re-listening to parts of these meetings. So he and I will sit down with other staff as well, we'll chew through this, try to come up with something that makes sense, that, that finds that balance, that, that protects the quality of life, without intruding on our rural lifestyle, and people's ability to live out here and, and be left alone as best they can. I think we want to leave people alone. I think the challenge becomes, when, when you're living your life being left alone, and you're having a negative impact on your neighbors. And that's, that's the one that we got to look at. We'll go through that, and try to come back with some, some recommendations, or some suggestions for council, for you guys to chew on further, and, and ultimately let you dictate the policy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Awesome. I think that was a good discussion. The only thing that I want to remind everybody that comes when we do something like this, is that the people we come down on who need it the worst, are gonna say, "Well, he's doing it, and he's doing it," and they're gonna point out and pick out all the other people that are doing it, maybe not to their level or their caliber, but unfortunately, what that scenario does, it makes us required to at least to have to address those smaller ones also. So, in the process, as we look at it, we may want to, you know, it may not be in the code of how many or whatever, so we may end up in a scenario of addressing, you know, tweaking that a little bit, on what we're gonna allow and what we're not, in getting rid of the severe offenders.
Right, I, I agree with you.
So I just want to share-
And I, I don't think this is gonna be one of those situations where we will come up with a magical solution in 60 days and implement it. This is gonna be a journey. This is gonna be something where we improve the situation, we get some feedback, we have to tweak it a little bit more, improve the situation. I think it's gonna be more of a cycle.
But, but the advantage we have is the code enforcement people, as you said, know what we're looking for and what we want, so they're really good at what they do for us. So, uh, I would say thank you again to what you all do for us. It's a necessary evil, unfortunately. And, uh, that's about it.